I'd like to call this January 8th, 2019, meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to order. We will start with a silent invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll go ahead and lead the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So, our first, excuse me, our first order of business this evening will be election of Chair and Vice Chair. So, what we'll do is, the first thing is, we will take nominations for, well, yeah, I think we'll do Chair first, right? Because it's not really specific here. So, we will do nominations for Chair of the Commission. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Maggie Hart-Stevens for Chair.
Okay, I have a motion for Commissioner Hart-Stevens. Do I have a second?
I second.
You have a second? Do we have any other nominations? There not being any, then I guess we'll just go ahead and vote. And all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I will now pass over this Chair to our new Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens. Congratulations.
Thank you Chairman Kazada, and thank you to all of my colleagues for your confidence in me. I look forward to serving as Chair this year. Before we move on to our next item of business, I am really pleased and privileged to present to Commissioner Kazada this recognition for his year of services as our Chair and before that as our Vice Chair. So, just want to say thank you for a lot of hard work and a job well done. All right, the next order of business will be the election of Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Chair Hart-Stevens, I would like to nominate Commissioner O'Malley for Vice Chair.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to elect Commissioner Debbie O'Malley as Vice Chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. And I would like to state for the record that Commissioner Talbert is excused for tonight's meeting. And I'd just like to ask that all of us keep him in our thoughts this week. We'll now move on to our next order of business, which is Item 4A, the Open Meetings Act Resolution of 2019. Madam Clerk, I just want to confirm this is AR 2019-1.
Thank you.
All right. I move that we approve the Administrative Resolution AR 2019-1, the Open Meetings Act Resolution for 2019. Do I have a second from Commissioner O'Malley? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We have Madam Clerk, I mean, sorry, Madam County Manager, do we have any changes or additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair Commissioners, there will be no changes or additions to the agenda.
Great, thank you. All right, we have no proclamations, but we do have a certificate and award, so Item 7A is recognition of the New Mexico 2018 Pro Football Hall of Fame National Youth Championship Team. Commissioner Kazada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a great honor for me to be able to read this acknowledgement. You know, I spent four years on the school board, and, you know, the success of our young people is what makes New Mexico strong and New Mexico proud. And I know that, you know, athletics was a big part of my life and all my friends' lives. And so, it was something that always kept us focused on something and helped us want to be able to do better in school because, you know, we had bigger aspirations, and that's because of athletics. And so, coming from the neighborhood I came from, that was huge for our success. And so, tonight, we have some young players out here that come from Yaffo, and they all, all of them showed, you know, great sportsmanship and also great athletic ability. And from what I understand, they're all really good students. And so, it's my pleasure to be able to read this evening. I'm waiting for them all to come down, and, you know, I think this is huge for what's happening here in New Mexico and happening here, especially here in the Albuquerque area. So, I am going to read this acknowledgement. This acknowledgement is from the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners, does hereby acknowledge the La Cueva Bears, the Rio Rancho Rams, and the Volcano Vista Hawks, acknowledging that the La Cueva Bears, the Rio Rancho Rams, the Volcano Vista Hawks youth football team, and this is the thing, they all played in December in the Mountain West Regional Tournament of the 2018 Football Hall of Fame World Youth Championship, and were all successfully advanced to the national tournament in Canton, Ohio. Now, I know that not everybody was able to go to Canton, Ohio, but that's not the point of this acknowledgement. The acknowledgement is that all these teams were picked to go there. Sometimes, because of financial situations, not everybody was able to attend, but just being picked and working hard and showing the heart that you had to be accepted to that is something that you should be proud of. And whether you participated in that, and I just wanted to make sure that all the kids out there knew that, that we're very proud of you despite of any other obstacles that hit in your way. So, acknowledging that the players and the families of the La Cueva Bears and the Rio Rancho Rams and the Volcano Vista Hawks invested great effort into succeed in the tournament, attending many practices to prepare for the tournament, honoring their skills and discipline for the game, and raising funds to travel to Ohio for the national rounds, and acknowledging that the La Cueva Bears, the Rio Rancho Rams, and the Volcano Vista Hawks honorably represented New Mexico, and again, not all teams were able to go up there, but playing against some of the best youth football teams in the country, and exemplifies the fruits of their hard work and dedication of preparation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners recognizes the La Cueva Bears, the Rio Rancho Rams, the Volcano Vista Hawks for their accomplishments in the 2018 Pro Football Hall of Fame World Youth Championship, and encourages the teams and players to continue their accomplishments in 2019, and give it with best wishes for the team's continued success. This day done on the 8th of January 2019, in Bernalillo County, the State of New Mexico, presented this day on January 8th, 2019, signed by all the Board of County Commissioners. Guys, congratulations, job well done, we're very proud of you. So, Madam Chair, I was wondering if we could get one of the coaches to say a few words?
Absolutely, we would welcome that.
My name is Antonio Manning, head coach of the Rio Rancho Rams sophomore team. I just want to personally say thank you guys for the acknowledgement. It's been a pleasure being a youth coach. I think all the coaches here today can testify, the majority of the people in this room, you know, opportunities is really passed forward from the elders, the older, the people that continue to push for opportunities for the youth. I can tell you here, I tell my team this daily, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for a coach or an adult creating an opportunity for me. So, on behalf of the Rio Rancho Rams, I want to say thank you.
Sure, thank you so much.
Yes, I just echo, oh, Mark Coe, Coach of the La Cueva Bears. These guys are 14, so they're going into high school now, so their journey started when they were seven. These kids have been together for a long time, so it was a great opportunity for our team to be able to showcase New Mexico, the talent here. And as Coach Manning said, you know, we're humbled, we're honored, we're volunteers, we don't get paid for this. The payment comes in 10 years from now when they're in the grocery store with their kids, and they come up and say, "Coach, you remember me?" And, you know, the sentiments go beyond, so much beyond the field. And we're just privileged, honored that you guys have us here tonight. And I know I'm speaking for all the players and the coaches, it was a great journey to Canton, and we look forward to all the youth teams, you know, making another round and going back representing us next year. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Jason Alwell, I'm one of the assistant coaches on the Volcano Hawks, and thank you guys for acknowledging us, we appreciate it. And we were one of the teams that didn't get to go out there. We tried our hardest to raise the money, but at the end we didn't make it. But, as a coach, I wanted to just thank everybody in here and also my players for giving such a good, hard job for us. You guys play hard, and we're not just out here teaching them to play football, we're teaching them to be young men, and hopefully we can shape their lives and their future. So, thank you guys again, we appreciate it. See you guys next season, good luck.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you. And we would love the opportunity to shake your hand, so if you could come up here and
Everybody looking this way, I hope I see all your faces. Three, two, one, three, two, one, more. And I think that's one more. Three, two, one. Thank you. Good job.
Look forward to seeing all those young people here next year. And before we move on, I am remiss in not having started with this, but I want to say welcome and congratulations to our newest colleague, Charlene Piscotti, who ran hard and was elected to represent District 5 for the next four years. So, really pleased to have you here, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm proud to be a part of this team, and I look forward to serving the people of Bernalillo County. Thank you so much.
Excellent, all right. We are now on to Item 10A, Approval of the Minutes. I move we approve the minutes of December 11th, 2018 Administrative Meeting. Do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Kazada. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're now on the consent agenda.
Madam Chairwoman, sorry to interrupt, but we need to go back to Item 9, which is public comment.
Thank you for the reminder. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
We have four signed up this evening.
Excellent. So, if you would please read the names, I want to let everyone sign up for public comment, that you'll have two minutes to speak, a bell or a, what do we have now, a signal?
It'll be a bell at the 30-second.
Okay, we'll have a bell. 90 minutes into your comments, letting you know you've got 30 seconds to wrap up. So, Julie, we'll call your name, if you could please come to the front when your name is called, and state your name for the record when you start. Thank you.
Don Trader, Rudolph Serano, Esther Griege, and Bill Mosteller.
Don Trader. Many years ago in Illinois, I wasted many precious hours hooked on television, violent westerns, money-mad game shows, stupid comedies. I woke up, since I first moved to Albuquerque 48 years ago, I have never owned a TV here. The main purpose of most TV is not to inspire, not to educate, not even to entertain. The main purpose of most TV is to sell stuff, not just the commercials, but especially the programs, the clothes people wear, their big houses, luxury cars, computers, smartphones, their shallow conversations. Have you seen any TV programs about US low-income, real families enjoying living simply and healthy? TV seduces people to buy, 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 to be somebody. TV keeps them ignorant about the millions abroad whose labor and resources are stolen by the US to feed addiction here to always more stuff. What good are superb acting and technical production excellence when programs glamorize greed, war, murder, rape, jealousy, revenge, booze, junk food, and stuff we do not need? I know I miss some good programs, but I am glad, very glad, I own no TV.
Good evening Commissioners, how are you today? We're jumping into 2019, you know, this is going to be a very intense year. We don't have an economy that is real. What we're paying our employees is, you know, already 7% less than what it should be, our dollar just lost 7% just last week.
Sir? I'm sorry to interrupt you, could you please state your name for the record?
This is Rudolph Serano.
Thank you.
Oh, that sounds better.
Please continue.
And like, two years ago, you know, when Bernie Sanders quit, you know, a week before the elections, I went home and I saw my kids crying, you know, they were so disappointed, like 45 million Americans, you know, that were putting his hopes on him. And it's like, look, I'm going to run and I'm not going to quit, you know, and it's been two years, you know? And I get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, it's like, oh man, do I really want to do this? I get coffee, and I give myself an extra hour back to bed. And, but you know, I keep on going. I keep on going, and 60% of Americans want to see somebody like me. You know, and we have to think, you know, why they don't want to see what we have? Why, what, they're tired of Washington? I think we can all say today, we don't have our food stamps this month. We have half the city, half the county, that they're going to rush into the stores trying to steal something to eat because we don't have a system that works. So, what I'm offering you is, you know, is like what I call the revolution or evolution, our evolution. 33% of the products, 33% of the business that you do, do it locally. Produce work locally, and more than anything, food. Let's push for people to make food at home so we have something at least to eat. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Esther Griege. I'm a leader with Albuquerque Interfaith, and I'm here to talk to you about the Health Security Act. It is a plan that is long overdue for the State of New Mexico. It is based on the old-fashioned idea of health insurance where the old, the young, the healthy, and the not-so-healthy are covered under one risk pool. It is a plan that has been worked on and was established in 1992. It is being presented to the state legislature at this session, and we are asking for your support. I have talked to Commissioners Kazada and O'Malley this afternoon about it, and I will be contacting all the other Commissioners as well. I have asked that a sheet that looks like this be placed in each one of your boxes so that you can read about it ahead of time. It is a plan that is, we all have a moral responsibility to make sure that all New Mexicans have proper and affordable healthcare available to them, so that folks do not have to run to the emergency room for their primary care. It is a plan that is, like I said earlier, long overdue, and I look for your support in this issue.
Hello, my name is Bill Mosteller. Thank you, County Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak in front of your commission. I'd like to begin by congratulating my Commissioner, Charlene Piscotti, on her recent electoral victory as one mental health professional to another. I think it's vitally important that more people, more professionals in the helping professions, get involved in governance and local politics, so thank you. I'd also like to thank Commissioner O'Malley for her fine work in establishing the Behavioral Health Commission and all the important work it's doing in improving public safety and public health in our community. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Hart-Stevens for her diligence and persistence in propelling the county towards excellence in so many areas, but including the Stepping Up Initiative and the Behavioral Health Initiative. Thank you, and that's all I have.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. All right, now we are on to approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, may I please have numbers for 11A, B, C? And that would be at 11A, B and C.
Madam Chair, that 11A is ordinance number 2019-1. 11B is FR 2019-2. And number C is FR 2019-3.
Thank you. I move approval of the consent agenda. We have a second from Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're now on to 12A, Adoption of, this is Introduction of Revisions to the Boards and Commissions Ordinance. I'm going to move approval and ask for a second, and then we'll have discussion. I'll move approval, we have a second. We have a motion and a second from Commissioners Kazada and O'Malley, and I'm not sure who is to speak to that. Julianne?
Yes, I will be presenting this introduction this evening. The proposal before you is an introduction for publication for ordinance-14-4. It's a revision to our code, our county code regarding boards and commissions. The revisions that are before you are to clean up language from the established ordinance. It's to formalize what we do for at-large appointments, formalizing precedent, and then also just to make clear for boards and commission appointments that are coming forward that we require a resume or a bio. So, it's just cleaning up language so that there's clarity on how we move forward with vacancies for at-large appointments. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'll also add, we did add in a provision for code of conduct as well for appointments, and we will be vetting that with our compliance officer as well.
Thank you. All right, seeing no questions or comments, we have a motion and a second to approve Item 12A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. On to Item 12B, Notice of Intent to Adopt an Ordinance for the, to Redevelop the Deanza Motor Lodge. Actually, I'm going to ask, I'm going to move approval and then ask for a second, and then we'll have discussion. You have a second?
Sir.
Second from Commissioner Kazada. Please. Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry, excuse me, members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the Notice of Intent to Adopt Ordinance, authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to approve a law-
to approve a local economic development LITA grant for the benefit of Anathia... I think I said that right. Or Anthea, sorry. At Nob Hill LLC. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve Item 12A. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now on to Item 12C, Public Hearing on Low-Income Property Tax Rebate Pursuant to NMSA 7-2-14.3. We are conducting a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do not.
All right. Do I have a motion? Any motion for approval? All right. Do we have a second? All right. Seeing no second, we will move on to Item 12D. This is a Notice of Intent to Adopt an Ordinance Concerning New Mexico General Obligation Bonds. I move approval. We have a second? We have a second from Commissioner O'Malley. Shirley, would you like to explain the item?
Madam Chair, I'm Shirley Rayan, Deputy County Manager for Finance. Staff requ... Let me see. The voters approved $38,700,000 in GO bonds in the November 6, 2018 election. And the county proposes the sale of $25,260,000 in GO bonds based upon expenditure projections received from departments and divisions responsible for expenditures of the bond funds. The property tax revenue projections are adequate to fund the sale of the $25.260 million in bonds with no increase to the debt service mail rate on the property taxes. So we have also here today our finance team, which consists of our bond counsel, our disclosure counsel, and our municipal advisor. But staff requests the approval to publish the Notice of Intent to Adopt an Ordinance for the Series 2019 Burnaleo County General Obligation Bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25,260,000. I stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the Notice of Intent to Adopt an Ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of Burnaleo County, New Mexico, general obligation bonds, Series 2019, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25,260,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Shirley.
Madam Chairwoman, can you repeat the... Who seconded that motion?
I believe it was Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think we go back on Item C. Does that have fiscal impact?
We had a motion, but no second. So it failed for lack of a second. All right. We're now on Item 13A, Motion to... Oh, Madam Clerk, may I please have an administrative resolution number?
Madam Chair, that's AR 2019-4.
Thank you. Would anyone like to move approval? I'm just gonna just say for the record, I think as chair, what I'm gonna do is ask for a motion and a second on every item so that we know whether to move forward. And so on this one, we'll get a motion. All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner O'Malley. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the Inducement Resolution authorizing the Burnaleo County Commission to approve a Project Revenue Bond, PRB, application on behalf of DBG Properties LLC. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair. You know, we've been really working hard on this area of my district and we've run into a couple of times where it just didn't really happen or pan out. And I'm just, you know, I'm just really hoping that this pans out. And I don't know if anyone's ever driven going west on the other side of the bridge, on Bridge Boulevard, but that, I don't know what it is. I guess at one point it was a motel?
Motor Lodge.
A motor lodge? Yeah. And it's a really bad way to see the South Valley. For that to be the first thing you see coming into the South Valley is really a sad piece of property. And so we're really hoping that this is gonna be the magical one and that we're gonna transform it. And it's really basically, you know, looking at how we're looking at senior living because that's gotta be one of our major plans moving forward as we develop in the city is how are we gonna provide for our seniors? So thank you so much for the support and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I know this is gonna come back to us, but this is a really interesting project. Could you just give us a quick, like, one-minute summary of what this is?
Absolutely. And I would also invite Betty Valdez... There she is. To come on down if you have any questions on behalf of the Burnaleo County Housing Nonprofit who is collaborating with, actually, DRG. I always say that wrong. Properties to do this project. It's really an interesting project. It is work... There's 58 units, steps up from the front of the building, steps back down in the back so that there are phases so it doesn't intrude on the surrounding neighborhood. There will be gardening. And as Commissioner stated, there is a real issue with not enough senior housing, particularly in the South Valley. So this is a project that we think will be an incredible anchor for the bridge corridor, which the Commission has had the fourth, you know, the insight to develop and move forward over the last five years to really try to help and establish a new corridor in that area with much more livable, much more walkable, much more business-friendly along that corridor. And we think this is a great anchor tenant to start that development.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I recall the last proposal didn't go, didn't make it, but I know that they addressed the issue of the street and really improved the look of the street to encourage walkability along that. Is that part of this plan as well?
Absolutely. And it's very inviting. The plans haven't been finished, but what I've seen so far are really quite amazing. They fit with the corridor plan. So the colors, the color schemes are stuff that's been... You know, there's tons of public meetings that adopted certain color schemes that should go along the corridor. This fits exactly within that. There's also going to be a mural inviting you sort of into the valley, into the community. So I think that there's been tremendous effort to really create a property that fits with the valley aesthetic and really enhances the neighborhood. Plus, the storefronts along the actual street have a really inviting quality to them. So, you know, the developers, along with Betty's help, have done really a Herculean lift, I think, to make sure that this community will be very inviting to not only the residents, but the surrounding community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to approve the Inducement Resolution, AR 2019-4, authorizing a Project Revenue Bond for DBG Properties LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We're now on to 14A. It's to approve... This is to introduce proposed minor revisions to the rules of procedure for regular administrative, special, and emergency meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. I move approval. A motion and a second from Commissioner Kazada. Julianne?
Okay. The motion before you this evening is for introduction of the rules of procedure for administrative meetings. Two major sections that were added to the administrative rules of procedure were the inclusion of facsimile signatures and also clarification of proclamations for presentation during these meetings. The inclusion of facsimile signatures allows the Commissioners to stamp their signatures on ceremonial documents, certificates, things of that nature. And those, of course, will not be allowable on any kind of legislation, ordinances, resolutions, things of that nature. The other minor revisions was to clarify how we select an acting chair and vice chair. Of course, as you recall, we had a situation last year where we did not have a chair and a vice chair present. So the question was, who is going to call the meeting to order in order for us to elect an acting chair? We also provided clarification for the removal of consent items, clarification of agenda order, and also business sections. And with that, I stand for questions.
Any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, can I just ask you a question since we're on the topic of special and emergency meetings? What is the time requirement for a special meeting? The advance? Is there a 72-hour?
I believe it is 72 hours. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Emergency meetings are, of course, 24 hours, at least.
Thank you, Julianne. All right. We have a motion and a second to introduce proposed minor revisions to the rules of procedure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right. And we are now on our final agenda item, 14B, which is approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the county and AFSMI 18 Local 3908. I move approval. You have a second? A second from Commissioner O'Malley. And who is here to present the item?
Madam Chair Commissioners, we just wanted to bring this before you and this is just the approval of AFSMI 18 Local 3908 Supervisor's Union Contract. This is the newest union to Burnaleo County, so it's a blue collar, basically a blue-collar supervisors' union. And the negotiations went very, very well. We continue to have a great relationship with them and I just want to thank them for their service to the county. They've done an excellent job.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the new union who'd like to speak to this? Don't have to, but you're certainly welcome to.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Brad Zellner. With the Heavy Equipment Shop at Burnaleo County. I've been with the county for, I'm on my 21st year here. I just want to thank you all for this. I think we had a great negotiation session with management and I just want to thank Chief Perez for all his hard work, Mary Murnane, Pamela Moon, and definitely Virginia herself. And I want to thank you all and Julie Baca as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm Adam Vaughn with Parks Area Supervisor for the North Crew. I've been with the county for a little bit over 22 years. I just want to thank all the people involved in this contract from our county manager, Julie Baca, Virginia, and the HR department, and our union negotiation team. Like I said, just appreciation for taking this into consideration and appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Pedro Apodaca and I want to say thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner O'Malley?
I know there was a lot of folks here with the... That worked very hard for the county, sitting before us and including the new union. And I just want to thank you for your hard work for us every day. We really appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the collective bargaining agreement unit... Sorry, the collective bargaining unit agreement with Burnaleo County AFSMI 18 Local 3908. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We have no discussion items, but I would, as always, like to thank our sheriff's deputies who come to these meetings and keep us in the public, keep an eye on things. Our next Commission meeting will be Tuesday, January 22, 2019, 5:00 p.m. here in the Vincent E. Griegeo Chambers. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.